Welcome to the San Mateo County Planning Commission Meeting of August 11, 2021. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. May we have roll call, please?
Yeah.
Here.
Here.
Chair Ketchum.
Here.
And Commissioner Malacruz is up.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Oral Communications. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak on any subject that is not on today's agenda. Speakers will be limited to five minutes. First staff will explain how the public comment process works for our remote meeting.
For those attending the meeting on the Zoom video conference, we will use the raised hand feature in order to organize any public comments. During the general public comment period and for each item on the regular agenda, I will ask those members of the public who wish to comment to click the raised hand feature to raise your hand to speak on that agenda item. For those joining by phone, please press star nine to indicate your desire to speak. Please note that members of the public must wait for my prompts in connection with each agenda item before using the raised hand function. For example, you cannot raise your hand at the beginning of the meeting for an item that is later in the meeting. When you hear your name called, I'll prompt you to unmute your account and inform you that you may begin speaking. And as of right now, I didn't receive any written comments, but I don't see any hands raised for items on the agenda chair. Oh, actually, I spoke too soon. If you see Julie Shankman. So Julie, please accept this invitation. Unmute your microphone and begin speaking.
Thank you. I wanted to speak on the Big Wave and I'm not sure if I should do that now or wait specifically for that agenda item. I could not hear you completely.
Yeah, my agenda item is item number one. So I think we'll be doing, after the presentation, we'll open it up to public comment.
Okay, my apologies.
And I don't see any more hands raised.
Seeing no other requests to speak, if there are no objections, we will close oral communications and move on to the consent agenda, which includes minutes of July 28, 2021, as revised. May we have a motion?
So moved.
I second.
We have a motion in the second. Roll call, please.
Aye.
Commissioner Hattie.
Aye.
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 Motion is approved four to one, uh, four to zero. Sorry. Okay, moving on now to the regular agenda, staff will introduce item number one.
Item number one, Big Wave Group applicant, county real property, file number PLN 2021-00276. Location Airport Street in Princeton and the project planner is Camille Long.
Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, so this is a different Big Wave item. It's the applicant's actually county real property and the owner is Big Wave. And the project is a general plan conformant, a finding by the planning commission of, of general plan conformance for the county's acquisition, likely acquisition of the South Parcel. And just to refresh your memories, as far as where the South Parcel is, this is Airport Street. This is the Hafn Bay Airport, Princeton. I believe this is Stanford, Pillar Ridge Mobile Home Park is right here. This is the North Parcel where the Wellness Center is being built. They haven't issued building permit. Um, and this is the Big Wave owned South Parcel that the county is interested in. And this is a view from Airport Street of the South Parcel. You'll see back here, there's a riparian area that joins the drainage that separates the North and the South Parcels. And the area is right now staged for, it was construction of the utility lines to the North Parcel to accommodate development there. The size of the, the size of the parcel is 5.2 acres and the zoning is actually three different kinds of zoning. But the primary, the primary zoning is waterfront design review coastal development district over much of the central portion of the parcel. The airport overlay overlays the first 125 feet of the parcel along Airport Street. And the RM CZ Design Review Coastal Development District follows the area along the drainage. The general plan designation of the parcel is general industrial and general open space over, I believe, the RM area and the existing land use is agriculture with some staging uses that are temporary. So the, this, the potential uses for the South Parcel that the county has in mind after it purchases the parcel is to expand the boundaries of the lands adjacent to Pillar Point Marsh for protection of the sensitive areas, to provide long-term protection of the agricultural and natural resources of the parcel, as well as the cultural resources of the site which are to the west. And also to explore constructing a community center and a nature center should the proper permits be granted. So also to refresh your memory, the South Parcel was approved under the Big Wave permits for beach user parking, I'm sorry, for beach user parking here, as well as for boat storage. The beach user parking per a July approval of a amendment to the development agreement has been moved to the North Parcel. So however, that is still part of the approved site plan. And there's also, as shown here, there's wetland areas, both local and state. Wetland areas. This is the airport overlay area. There's various easements that was approved under the Big Wave project and an environmentally sensitive area here that is protected by a note on. This is the draft parcel map, which has not yet been recorded. So while these show easements that would have served Big Wave, the county would relook at these easements in terms of how it supports the intended uses for the county. However, the areas that are, would be protected, as shown here, would continue to be protected. The environmental sensitive area would have the same boundaries. The wetland would have same boundaries. The ozone would have the same boundaries. And this shows a little better the sort of the developable area of the South Parcel that the county could plan a community center or major center. The zoning under the W district allows for marine-related assembly and educational uses, which would support the community center use as a principally permitted use. And also, under the W regulations, a park use would be allowed, such as a nature center with a use permit. But those would still have to be proposed and detailed out and reviewed. So the general plan, there's, as stated in the staff report, there's various sections that are applicable to this site, such as biological, there's onsite sensitive habitat that's within the Riparian Corridor and the delineated wetlands. There is, the properties within the county scenic corridor for Highway One. And the site, there's a cultural site onsite. The exact location cannot be revealed. But the, the general location is indicated on the draft parcel map. And location wise, the site's very well located. It's just north of the marine industrial area, nearby residential areas, and also near commercial areas. In terms of the safety section of the general plan, I discuss in the staff report that the site is located within runway safety zone two. It's the IADZ, which limits the residential density of the site to 60 persons per acre and actually prohibits assembly type uses such as theaters, auditoriums and stadiums. However, there is a provision within the ALUC, the Airport Land Use Compatibility Map for Hafn Bay Airport, where the ALUC Committee can grant an exception to those prohibited uses. Finding, making a very specific finding of extraordinary factors and circumstances related to the site. And those, the, the specific finding is that the land use would not create a safety hazard to people on the ground or aircraft in flight, nor result in excessive noise exposure for the proposed use. And as to the nature of the extraordinary circumstances that warrant the policy exception, so we would have to detail what those extraordinary circumstances would be. We argue that the nature and the community center would be more of an intermittent use and would allow for some congregation, but no significant congregation of a lot of people at any given time. And of course, those specific proposals would have to be detailed and reviewed at the time of projects in the middle. So the planning and building recommend that the planning commission find the proposed acquisition of the South Parcel that it conforms to the general plan as detailed in the staff report and in this presentation. And stuff is available for any questions.
Thanks, Camille. And with Chair Ketchum's permission, I'll just add a couple of comments. Is that okay?
Yes.
So, yeah, just with regard to discussion of potential future uses, you know, we're putting out there the idea of a nature community center is a possibility, but we certainly recognize there needs to be a community input process to make any final decisions regarding how the site will be used. So I didn't, I don't want the commissioners or anyone participating in today's hearing to think that, you know, we've made a final conclusion on that. So with that said, I think that there are underlying values to this site that warrant protection acquisition by the county for protection and enhancement of natural resources. And so even if the site were to remain in open space and be used for those purposes, I think that would be a great asset to the county and its residents. So I think that there's the possibility for compatible uses. I think no matter how the county uses the property, protection enhancement of the natural resources on the site and of course, on the adjacent site owned by or managed by county parks with the critically important Pillar Point Marsh. I think there's great opportunity for that natural resource protection and enhancement. So, but we want to keep the door open to other uses. They might serve the community. So if there's the desire to pursue those, we think that there are some feasible options in that regard. Finally, I'll just close with just a note on process. So the question before the commission today is whether or not this acquisition would conform to the general plan, which includes our local coastal program. And that's simply whether or not purchased by the county for, you know, the potential uses that we described today would be consistent with the general plan. It's not a decision about any development that will occur on the site. As Camille noted, that would be subject to future analyses and permitting after, of course, community input was obtained. And then with regard to the relationship to the Big Wave project, there are aspects of, on the North Parcel, that is, there were aspects of that development proposal that required mitigation on both the North and South Parcel. And in contemplating the acquisition of the part of the Southern Parcel, the county recognizes that, you know, those commitments will continue to need, need to be fulfilled. So this potential acquisition by the county would no way undermine the types of mitigations that were required to support the development of the North Parcel. So that concludes my comments and both Camille and I are happy to answer any questions.
Okay, so Commissioner, questions for staff? Shall we start with Commissioner Ramirez?
Thanks, Steve, for the clarification on that. I like the idea of a community center in that area. Has there actually been any interest by the community around that?
Oh, there's been great interest in establishing a community center. I don't think this location, to my knowledge, has ever been identified because I don't know that anyone has really seen it as being on the table. From my perspective, I think it's a great location in terms of being centrally located between the various communities of the mid-coast. So, and plus its proximity to the great recreational resources nearby, I think is a real asset as well. So I will be very interested in hearing the community's thoughts on that.
Okay. All right. No additional questions right now.
Commissioner Gupta.
Um, yes, I had several questions, but a lot of them have been clarified by Camille as well as Director Monovit. So my question is, other than these community centers and nature centers, what, what other things have been thought about for this parcel by the county?
Well, I'll start and Camille, you can back me up. As I said, we recognize that certain commitments have been made in conjunction with the approval of development on the North Parcel. So protection of the adjacent wetlands and allowing for sustainable agricultural activities, I think would be what could occur without any sort of construction. So I think that's in the short term, that's what we would see is the county working with the Big Wave to move, make sure that the wetland restoration and enhancement requirements of the development as it relates to the South Parcel are fulfilled. And that if where possible, we will allow for continued agricultural use. That was another condition of the coastal development permit for Big Wave was that until the development actually occur, that the site, of the appropriate portions of the site that can be used for agriculture will be retained in agriculture. So I think that would be the short term uses and then the long-term uses would be determined after a community vetting process.
Okay. So right now it is being used for agriculture?
Yes. You know, as Camille noted, it's been used for other purposes as well in terms of staging for construction related to the North Parcel and storage of some other materials owned by Big Wave. But yes, it has been used by Big Wave. There is a, Big Wave does have an agricultural component to its programs. And so they've been farming on the South Parcel. And it's possible that we could accommodate continued farming by Big Wave or some other, somebody else if the county were to acquire.
Thank you. So if county acquires this parcel, who is responsible for building those parking? And boat, boat parking as well as other parking?
The coastal access parking. So about a month ago, the Big Wave Group went to the Board of Supervisors with the request to modify the development agreement and previously approved site plan in a manner that transferred the public parking area that was previously located on the Southern Parcel to the Northern Parcel. So Big Wave has committed to building the public parking on the North Parcel and the Board of Supervisors has approved that amendment. So there's, you know, no requirement on Big Wave or the county, if we were to acquire it, that that boat storage actually get approved. At the time that the Big Wave project was being reviewed, I think there was a real interest in knowing, well, what's going to happen to the South Parcel? And at that time, the Big Wave Group wanted to retain some economic use. They recognize that it's in the waterfront district and has many constraints. So their proposal that was approved kind of set a development envelope and allowed this boat storage as a use that they could build or they could sell the parcel and somebody else could build it. But it doesn't commit a future owner to actually building the boat storage use. As I mentioned, you know, there are commitments for environmental mitigation that will carry with the land and we recognize tend to comply with that. But in terms of an economic use, there are alternatives to boat storage that are allowed by zoning, including some of the uses or all of the uses the county are contemplating. And we would just need to secure separate permits to construct them. So just to sum up, that boat storage envelope is available for any future owner to build with something allowed by zoning. It's just if they're going to build something other than the boat storage that was previously approved, they're going to need to get a different permit to do so.
Okay. So, so if I understand correct, that's a potential use or potential, potentially it could be done, but it's not something that's a done deal. Okay.
Yes, it's up to the owner to determine how they want to make the use of the site.
And when you say owner, if county acquires it, county is the owner?
That is correct.
That's correct. Okay, okay. And there are some easements that Camille mentioned. How much of the total parcel has, is under that easement, which to my understanding, it cannot be used for any financial development or anything?
Camille, do you have the acreage handy?
Uh, I don't. It's, it's quite a bit though, as you can see.
To be about, almost close to half the site, little bit less.
Yeah, it looks like over, over half the site would be easement. There's an aggie's man, a conservation easement. Okay.
Just to comment though, on the easements, because you know, the easements kind of lock in on the map what already exists on the ground and in our regulations. And that is, you know, with or without easements on the property, any development needs to comply with our LCP requirements, which establish setbacks from wetlands and protect agricultural lands. So the easements are simply mapping out what we already know to be regulatory requirements. So I don't see them to be a burden beyond what the site could support if there were no such easements reported on the property.
Okay, all right. And in the slides that I saw, it looks like the area is quite flat. Is that?
Is, yes, that's correct. There's a slight down slope towards the wetland area.
Okay, okay. All right. So, so no issues with any landslide?
No.
Yeah.
No, I think the hazards here are potential tsunami inundation. Of course, you know, all of California has earthquake risk. So it's not without risks, but nothing related to steep hillsides.
Okay, okay. All right. And not, no flooding issues?
Well, so this is part of the Pillar Point Wetland Drainage System, watershed, if you will. And so, you know, we are looking in Plan Princeton at the impacts of sea level rise, for example, because this area, I think, is one of the primary areas of the county that might be susceptible to impacts from sea level rise. So I, I wouldn't say that flooding is not a potential issue.
Yeah, I had one, one last question and I'm just looking for it. I'll, I'll come back to it. Thank you so much. Thank you so much for clarifying several things for me. Thank you, Stephen. Thank you, Camille.
You're welcome.
Questions?
I have a quick question. What is the water source for the aggie's man? I mean, I know there's farming there, but I'm not aware of any onsite water source or connection.
There is a well on site, I believe. Or is it on the other side?
It's.
Yeah, there was a water line that goes between the two sites.
So will the, they've been, I, I assume the water for the Big Wave ag operation either is purchased from the adjoining warehouse or is piped down from the well on the North Parcel? I just wondered going forward, what the water source, what are the water source options with the parcel?
Yeah, I don't know for the ag operation. I presume your assumptions are correct. I think it's likely piped down from the well on the North Parcel. And if that's been the practice, I don't see why that could not continue for agricultural purposes. For any substantial development of the site, it would need to tie into the new water line that's being constructed by Big Wave to serve the North Parcel. I forget. I know there is water and sewer, one coming from one way, one from the other way. So but we, the development would tie into municipal services.
I think that would be a significant issue because the, the South Parcel is in the Montero Water and Sanitary District and the water extension only went as far as the North Parcel, as far as I know. Uh, so if the county wanted to have some, needed a water source, potable water source, then that would be a significant point to consider.
Extension of the water line and the costs involved in that.
Yeah. That's all, all the questions I have. Commissioner Gupta, did you have anything? You said you might have more questions.
Yes, yes. Just one last question. And it said that the zoning for this parcel is general industrial use?
Is that actually, yeah, um, right. The, the North Parcel is actually M1 and waterfront zoning does include some, some sort of like industrial uses. So that's probably why that's industrial.
Okay. So, so that means that there could be a manufacturing plant built there?
It, I doubt it could carry that kind of use, but.
Yeah. So let me try and clarify. I think the industrial designation is at a very high level of the general plan. And then you have more specific designations set by area plans and zoning and so forth. So the waterfront zoning is kind of a subset of industrial. And I think that's why Big Wave previously proposed the boat storage because our zoning and local coastal program strongly encourages types of industrial. types of industrial uses that will serve the fishing and boating and coastal recreation industries and uses. And so I think some of the uses that the county is contemplating not only serves the community, but the visitors that like to come enjoy the area and would be consistent with the waterfront designation, which is really a subset of the industrial designation.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. No more questions.
Okay, now we'll move on to public comment and I'll turn this portion over to Ms. Luhan.
Thank you, Chair. We're now opening public comment for item number one. If your hand is raised, your name will be called for this item. I will lower your hand after you speak. So it's only by telephone, press star nine to raise and unraise your hand. I do see Karen Holmes with her hand raised. So Karen, please accept this invitation. Unmute your microphone and begin speaking.
Start again.
Oh, hi, I'm using Karen Zoom. This is Scott Holmes and we're both here. I, I was mostly just going to be available for answering questions. See, the water line is extended down to about 100 feet of this parcel. So that could be a relatively easy extension in the future. We are serving it with a irrigation line, which could probably remain also. The, the, none of the easements have been recorded yet. So the county has some flexibility on how to record those easements in terms of a little bit of flexibility in terms of where the community center could go. But that's really up to the county once they purchase it. And I just wanted to voice my appreciation to Steve and Camille for all the work they've done on, on this kind of fairly complicated project, but that's, that's it. And thank you for proceeding with this.
Thank you. The next person is Julie Shankman. Julie, please accept this invitation. Unmute your microphone and begin speaking.
Thank you. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak today. As a longtime coastal resident and also a small business owner, we own Sam's Chowder House on the coast. I just wanted to express my feedback that I think this purchase really helps the entire community in a lot of ways. For example, the, the midcoast really needs a place for a community center. And this is a perfect place. This is a beautiful, peaceful area that could be an ideal location for providing this, this community benefit to the underserved residents of San Mateo County and in this midcoast area. And we think that combined with the existing community farm, it would really provide a tremendous benefit to the entire coast. The second thing I wanted to say is, is thank you to entertaining this proposal today. And a special thanks to Steve Monowitz and Camille for all the hard work on getting this proposal this far. I am a parent of a future resident of Big Wave. And Big Wave was started the year that our son was born. He's 20 now. It's taken a long time to get it this far. All the proceeds of this sale will help to make Big Wave possible and give our son and others like him a place of his own to live and socialize and experience a meaningful life and, and not just while we're here, but long after we're gone. So it has this added benefit of helping to serve this very underserved community. And there's really no housing on the coast for this community. So a really lovely side effect of this purchase is helping, helping this community. So as a parent, I also want to thank you for your past support in getting us where we're at today. And I ask you to please finalize this offer and just thank you from the bottom of my heart as especially its parent. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks for your comment. So let's give it a few seconds. I don't see any more hands raised for this item. And once again, if you're calling by phone, press star nine to raise your hand. Here, I don't see any hands raised.
Okay, seeing that no additional members of the public wish to speak, if there are no objections, public comment on the side is now closed. Does staff have any additional comments?
No, I do, Chair.
We'll move on now to Commissioner's comments and deliberation and we'll start with Commissioner Ramirez.
Thank you. Yeah, as I said before, I like the idea of a community center around this. I, I like the idea of the county controlling this land being that it's in such a sensitive area. And I think that the county would do a good job of protecting those sensitive areas. And for that, I'm going to say that I am very much in favor of it.
Commissioner Gupta. I would like to thank Camille as well as Director Monowitz. Very good report. I really like this style. And you put all the information in there. So thank you for that. I, yes, it looks like a good project to me and, and I'm glad that county is proactively kind of protecting these areas in some ways so that we are not just building things or doing things without thinking it through. So thank you for that. I am, I am in support of this project. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Commissioner Hassan.
I want to echo the same comments as the fellow, my two fellow commissioners and also say I'm in support of this project.
I too am in support. And I just wanted to add, as you look at the sea level rise projections and coastal retreat, I think this will be a useful area to, for retreat for the marsh and has much value in that way. So may we have a motion?
I will move that the planning commission find that the proposed acquisition by the county of San Mateo of a 5.28 acre parcel as profile number APN 047-312-040 conforms to the county general plan.
And I will second that.
You have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gupta?
Aye.
Commissioner Hassan?
Aye.
Commissioner, if I made it?
Aye.
Aye. Motion's approved for zero. Thank you. So we'll move on now to agenda item two. Staff will introduce the item.
Really quickly, Chair, I don't see our planner for item number two on the call yet.
Well, that's an interesting recall. Someone please advise what we do in this case.
Could we move to the following item and yeah, move to item number three and then come back to item number two, maybe? That's what my suggestion.
Okay. Item number three.
Perfect. Item number three. Order applicant, San Mateo County Planning and Building Department, file number PLN 2020-00239. Location, County Coastal Zone. And our project planner is Warden Gibson. Take it away.
Thank you, Janice. Good morning, Commissioners and good morning, staff. Good to see you all. I'm just going to share my screen quickly. And you should be seeing my PowerPoint now. So, so this, this item is the final step in our updated ADU regulations for the coastal zone. The California Coastal Commission has, has finally heard our amendments, which the planning commission heard last year, and has suggested some very slight modifications. So that is the purpose of this item before you today. So this is an ordinance adopting the California Coastal Commission's modifications to the county's accessory dwelling units for the coastal zone and modifications to our local coastal program. So just, just some background, last September, your commission heard the amendments to the specifically the coastal zone ADU regulations and changes to the LCP related to ADUs and recommended that the Board of Supervisors adopt these regulations. And the board subsequently did so in November of 2020. At that point, as required, the amendments were submitted to the coastal zone commission for their review and certification. And, and per law, they do not take effect until they are certified. The commission finally heard the amendments on July 8th of this year and they recommended what is called a conditional certification, which is contingent on some minor modifications, specifically in this case to the parking requirements in the regulations. So in order for our amendments to now take effect, the Board of Supervisors must adopt those modifications by ordinance. So, so just to go through what the coastal commission has suggested, our original proposed amendments track state law pretty identically. So we require one parking space for any new accessory dwelling unit in the coastal zone. That may be uncovered. It may be in tandem in the front setback. It does not need to be the traditional covered parking that we require for primary residences. But any parking removed in order to create a new ADU in, in the result of a garage conversion or demolition or other circumstances such as that is not required to be replaced. And ADUs in proximity to certain transit or car share locations or other locations that make it less likely that they need a car, do not need to provide a new parking space. And off-street parking exceptions are also available in cases where parking cannot otherwise be provided through our normal parking exception process. And so what the coastal commission has suggested is that in some specifically mapped areas, which I will show in a moment, that provide direct coastal access, the coastal commission's modifications are, we would still require one parking space for any new ADU. The parking would still be provided uncovered, tandem in the front setback, all of the alternative methods that we provide in the regulations. However, parking removed in order to create an ADU, so parking that was provided for the primary residence, but it is being removed to create an ADU, must be replaced in any of those configurations that we allow. The exemptions for parking for ADUs in proximity to car share or transit or other locations would not be allowed. So those would still need a new parking space. And the off-street parking exception specifically for ADUs in these mapped areas would not be allowed either. And let me just show the areas that we're talking about here. So essentially in the Montero and Moss Beach area in the midcoast, it is the areas most directly adjacent to the coast where any additional parking congestion might make it hard for visitors to park and to access the coast. And similarly in El Grande and Pillar Point, a much smaller area mapped that also provides that direct access. So it's a small portion of the midcoast and a far smaller portion of the coastal zone itself where visitor-serving coastal uses might be inconvenienced if we were allowing ADUs to have the parking exceptions that otherwise would apply. And in staff's view, these are pretty reasonable compromises and compromises that were we not trying to follow state law exactly? We might have proposed similar regulations ourselves. So in, in, the outcome of this would be that these parking area maps would be added to chapter three of our local coastal program. The parking requirements specific to these areas would be added as an amendment to our regulations, chapter 22.5.1. And the coastal commission did not take issue with any of the other proposed amendments or changes in our regulations or in the local coastal program. You will see that there are a few other minor amendments in the ordinance that's attached. Those were just cleanup. We misnumbered a few things and we left one, we added one section twice by editorial error. So this cleans up that as well, but they, those are not substantive changes. So in order to accept these, the conditional certification from the coastal commission, the board must accept the modifications, adopt them by ordinance, and as a technical matter, agree to issue coastal development permits under the modified regulations. And after adoption, the amendments will be resubmitted to the coastal commission, but not for a full hearing, just for the executive director to review and affirm that they're legally sufficient. These are, again, like all changes to our ADU regulations, they're specifically exempted from environmental review by state law. The coastal commission's process also substitutes for environmental review. So these are doubly exempted. With that, staff's recommendation is the planning commission recommend that the Board of Supervisors adopt the ordinance amending the accessory dwelling unit regulations, chapter 22.5.1 and amending section 3.2.2 to accept and adopt the modifications suggested by the coastal commission. With that, that concludes my presentation and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may.
Thank you. Do Commissioners have questions for staff? Let's start with Commissioner Ramirez.
I do not.
Commissioner Gupta.
No, it looks, it looks like they did coastal commission, if I'm saying that right, did a very good job of wording it. So no, I do not have any questions.
Commissioner Hassan.
Yes. First off, I would say I thought these were improvements to the original things that we agreed to. On the map, there are certain areas that are excluded that look like that might be in residential. But my guess, but I just want to here confirm that these are not residential properties and therefore that's why they're excluded.
That's correct. Those are properties where ADUs would not be allowed to be created because they're non-residential. So, so the coastal commission did capture all of the R1 zoned areas in those, those locations.
So my question then is, should these get rezoned somewhere in the future? Does that map get extended if it becomes residential?
I would assume because of rezoning would have to go through the coastal commission. It would get extended at that point. I think the coastal commission would likely insist on that.
Okay. No, I think these are improvements. So thank you and a nice write-up.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll now have public comment on this item and I'll turn it over to Ms. Luhan.
Thank you, Chair. We're now opening public comment for item number three. You have, please raise your hand. You can do star nine in order to raise your hand if you're calling by phone. And at this time, I don't see any hands raised, so let's give it a few seconds. Here, no hands raised.
Well, seeing, seeing that no members of the public wish to speak, if there are no objections, public comment on this item is now closed. Now we'll move on to Commissioner's comments and deliberation. Commissioner Ramirez.
Yeah, I'm going to say that, yes, I am in favor of passing this on to the Board of Supervisors. I think that the, the changes that were suggested are minor. And I'm going to agree with Commissioner Hanson. I think these are improvements to what we had already agreed to. So yes, I am in favor.
Commissioner Gupta. It, it looks very complete to me and I'm in favor of that and I'm ready to make a motion whenever Commissioners are ready.
Commissioner Hanson, did you have anything else?
I have nothing. Go. I, I've, after your comments, I've enjoyed Commissioner Gupta to make the motion.
I support the changes. So maybe we have our motion.
Okay, so the planning commission approves the coastal development permit, design review and non-conforming use permit. County file number, am I reading the right recommendation or?
No.
That's number two, but we switched to number, because we're out of sequence. That's the problem.
Oh, okay, okay. Just a moment. Or if you could put it up, I can read that. Okay, found it. Okay. So the planning commission recommends that the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors adopt an ordinance amending the county's accessory dwelling unit regulations applicable to the county's coastal zone, chapter 22.5.1 of the county zoning. Chapter twenty-two point five point one of the county zoning regulations and section three point two two of the county's local coastal program to accept and adopt modifications suggested by the California Coastal Commission in the commission's conditional certification of the county's amended regulations.
I'll second there.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please. Hi.
Commissioner Hanson.
Hi.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Hi.
Hi. Motion's approved four to zero. So now do we have a planner for item two?
We have a substitute, but if the chair would be so kind to allow for a five-minute break, it would enable us to get her online and get everything set up.
We could do that. So, okay, we'll be back in five minutes.
Thank you very much.
Are we all here?
Yeah, it looks like we're, we're all back.
All right. If you're ready, staff will now introduce item number two.
Item number two, owner applicant, John Frieda. File number PLN two zero two zero dash zero zero one six seven. Location, it's located off of Avenida Portola between Coronado Street and Alameda School in Elgrada. And our project planner this morning is Summer Burris.
Good morning. Thank you. Can you hear me okay? Great. And I am going to share my screen here. Just a moment. Okay. Good morning, Chair Ketchum and Planning Commissioners. The item here before you is for the consideration of a coastal development permit, design review and non-conforming use from it to allow the construction of a new eight hundred and forty-seven square foot single-family residence with an attached one-car garage with reduced right side and rear setbacks. And I apologize, filling in here, I do not have a, a typical presentation that you're used to seeing. So I appreciate your, your patience and bearing with me. And this property is a substandard size parcel. It's two thousand three hundred and thirty-five square feet in size. It is a legal parcel. It was legalized through a certificate of compliance in two thousand and nineteen. And it's the parcel hopefully you're seeing here highlighted on your screen on along Avenue Portola between Coronado and the Alameda. And the project proposal. Can you see the change in screen?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Includes. Okay. And so the project proposal, as I mentioned, includes the development of this vacant lot with a one store, with a single-family residence. The lot is approximately twenty-five feet in width. And so it's substandard in size. The project includes a reduced right side setback to three feet where five feet is required. And a reduced rear setback of thirteen feet, five inches where twenty feet is required. The project will comply with the left side five-foot setback and the twenty-foot required front setback. The project also includes the construction of a garage as shown here, a one-car garage and a, an additional parking space on the property to conform with the requirement of two-covered parking spaces for a house with two or more bedrooms, which this proposes. The project also includes a water mainline extension along Avenue Portola between Coronado Street and the, and the Alameda to serve the project and the removal of one significant pine tree that is eighteen inches in diameter on the project. Sorry. And and minimal grading is, is necessary. The project has been reviewed. Staff has reviewed the project for conformance with the general plan policies, the local coastal program policies and zoning regulations. And have found the project to conform with each set of policies and standards. There are no sensitive habitats on the property. Water and sewer have been confirmed by the Coastside County Water District and the Granada Community Services District for service for the proposed development. And minimal grading, as I mentioned, is proposed and erosion, and erosion and sediment control plan has been prepared to ensure that any minimal grading work that's done on the property is contained on the site so that there are no off-site impacts. The project, as I mentioned, is requesting the non-conforming use permit, being on a substandard pipe size parcel of less than the minimum lot size required of five thousand square feet does require the non-conforming use permit. And along with that, non-conforming use permit is the reduced right side setback and rear setback. And with regards to the parking, just to mention typically a house with two or more bedrooms requires two covered parking spaces. However, our parking regulations do indicate that for properties in the mid-coast area such as this that are on parcels of less than thirty-five hundred square feet may provide a one-covered parking space and one uncovered parking space is allowed to meet the, the minimum parking requirements and that is what is proposed here. The project has gone before the Coastside Design Review Committee. The Coastside Design Review Committee met to discuss the project on February eleventh, two thousand twenty-one. And they did make a recommendation for approval. And just moving through the plans here to get to the elevation. So here's some renderings of the, of the proposal. It does appear to be a one-story house with the deck at the rear on this upper left elevation, the one-car garage at the front. And and the Coastside Design Review Committee did find that the home design does respect the privacy of other houses as it's just a one-story residence. And windows and entrances and the rear deck are oriented such to, as to minimize direct view impacts or privacy impacts from adjacent properties. And the home, the design review committee did feel that the home does respect the, the scale and of the home is respectful to the size of the property being a substandard sized lot. And that the, the shape and the roof design and the facade articulations that are proposed, along with the materials and colors proposed are complementary to other homes in the area. And so the Coastside Design Review Committee, as I mentioned, did recommend, make a recommendation for approval of the project and the colors and materials. And as you can see here, some horizontal block siding and color shown here in the right side of some neutral grays and earth toned colors. The project does sorry, my scroll is a little slow here. So as I mentioned, the project does require minimal grading. And an erosion and sediment control plan has been prepared for the project. The sewer, or I'm sorry, the water mainline extension would run down Avenue Portola to connect to the project site. And some onsite drainage facilities will be included in the development to capture stormwater runoff commensurate to the level of impervious surface on the property. And the non-conforming use permit findings that need to be made include that the proposal conforms, you know, as much as, as nearly possible conforms with the zoning regulations currently in effect, as I mentioned. With the exception of the side and the rear setback reductions, the project will comply with the zoning regulations and development standards for the, the zoning district, which I should mention is an R three S three zoning district. And that the another finding is that the proposed development is proportioned to the size of the project parcel on which it's being built on. And as I mentioned, the design review committee did feel did support that the proposed scale of the development was respectful to the size of the parcel. And staff as well concurs with that assessment. And that all opportunities to acquire additional contiguous land in order to achieve conformity to the zoning regulations currently in effect have been investigated and proven to be infeasible. The surrounding parcels are developed with single-family residences in separate ownership. So the ability to acquire additional land, adjacent land to bring the parcel into conformance is not a feasible option for the applicant. And the additional finding that needs to be made for a non-conforming use permit is that the approval does not constitute a granting of special privileges. And Steph does not believe that this that a granting of this non-conforming use permit would be a special privilege as the same considerations could be given to other development projects in similar situations on such non-conforming sized parcels in the area. The project has been reviewed for compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines and staff found that the project is exempt pursuant to section fifteen, three oh three class three A, which exempts the construction of single-family residences in urbanized areas such as this. And so staff is recommending that the planning commission approve the coastal development permit and non-conforming use permit and design review, county file number PLN two thousand twenty dash zero zero one six seven by adopting the required findings and conditions of approval listed in attachment A of the staff report. And that concludes my presentation and I am available for any questions you may have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do commissioners have questions for staff? Commissioner Ramirez.
I don't have any questions at this time.
Commissioner Gupta.
I have some questions. So on on page thirty-eight, there are several palm trees shown. And then I see there are two being removed while we are talking about only one tree being removed. Am I missing something?
I thought it was gonna be one.
It's page thirty-eight.
Okay.
Of the staff report.
Got it on the, let's see, on the landscape plan three.
There's one right in the driveway and then one close to the street. It says number one pine to be removed.
Yes, and let me take a quick look here. It looks like. Sorry, I appreciate your patience.
No problem. Take your time.
It it does appear just from a quick eyeball sight of the site that the the palm tree. There is one palm tree that does appear would be of a size that twelve inches in diameter or greater does require a permit. It is regulated as a significant tree and does require a permit to remove. And it does look like that that again, just from a quick eyeball sight and would be over twelve inches. And so that is an additional tree that looks like was not identified in the staff report, but that would need to be removed. And I can, I may ask the applicant to just confirm that. But you're correct, it does look like there is one palm tree on the property that needs to be added to the the tree removal.
Right, okay, okay. Yeah, that would be, I think we should make sure that we know exactly what's happening. So, okay. Then one of my other questions is like we have, we or the applicant is asking for three feet of side. Three feet area of setback on the side. What is on the other side of that property? What is there another structure?
Yes, and if I may share my screen, visual may be helpful here. And so this is the, hopefully you can see this, this is the project site and on this, so the kind of this upper property side property line is the side that is requesting the reduced three-foot setback. And the adjacent parcel here does have a single-family residence. It is, you know, offset from the center of that parcel, so it is more towards the the right side setback of that parcel as well. So further away from from this common property line where the reduced setback is being proposed.
Okay, okay, yeah. And please leave that slide up because my next question is how about in the back? Because we have smaller setback request there also.
Yes. And so from the back and this parcel is a somewhat not non-typical, it is a L-shaped parcel and that fronts both on the Upper Street here and on Avenue Portola. But at the rear here, there the request is for a little over thirteen-foot setback where twenty feet is required. And that is measuring to the rear deck that's proposed on this project. And to the rear here, it looks like their development is in this area, kind of on the north side of their L-shaped parcel. And so the rear of this is, looks like a rear open yard space to that property.
And and on the third side.
So on, yes, on the left side setback, which would be this lower yellow line here. The minimum setback is five feet and that is what is proposed. So they are in compliance on this side and it, I believe that there is a development that was built here in association with the residence. The applicant may be able to clarify that. This shows it's just an open area. As I mentioned, this is all one parcel though. And potentially an ADU or accessory building may have been built here for the residents.
So that white portion to your knowledge is some structure, the right.
Here.
No, down here on the.
Oh, down here.
Yeah, right.
I think there may be, yes, I can check our permit records on that very quickly. Here and see.
Is that something written? Because I can't read it.
Oh, I'm sorry, this little. I'm sorry, those are just address numbers.
Address.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, sorry, sorry, I misunderstood that. Okay, okay. So that is, thank you for clarifying that. Let me see, any, any history of it looks like kind of a flat land?
Yes, it is. So this is the the parcel. Hopefully it switched over here on your screens. But yes, and this is where I mentioned the the project parcel is here. Here's this pine tree. Here's this palm tree. And as I mentioned, this is where I believe this is a garage slash studio slash ADU that was recently constructed on that adjacent parcel where where you were asking about that and address number. But along this side, there is a compliant five-foot setback is being proposed. And then this is that adjacent home that's.
That's a good picture. Right, right, right. That gives a much better.
And I believe this is construction on this is completed now.
Okay, okay. All right, great. And so that's a flat land there. But this answer. Was it ever considered? No, no, I think I got that answered already. Thank you. One last question. If I understood correctly, it said there are inside fire sprinklers.
I believe there will be, fire sprinklers will be required.
Inside the building?
Inside the home.
Inside the home. Okay, okay. Thank you. Thank you. That's all I.
Commissioner Hanson.
Yep.
Yes.
A palm tree, it's just an overgrown lily. So is it legally defined as a tree and not as a plant?
And that's a good question. I believe in practice, I can say that we have permitted them under tree removal permits through our significant tree ordinance. So we have considered them trees relative to compliance with our significant tree ordinance and requiring a permit to remove.
Interesting, because I just never thought of it, thought of it as a tree, just an overgrown plant. That's not my real question. My real question is, just so I understand the consequences. First, I love the idea of a starter home. We don't build enough of them. Not that I'm promoting any more growth in the coast side, but I don't see enough starter homes being built in this county. If an ADU is added to this property, where would it conceptually be? It would have to be a second story? Is that?
Well, ADUs would be allowed reduced setbacks from the primary zoning district of the twenty-foot front and rear and five-foot sides and our ADU regulations, as you know from earlier and are currently being amended through the coastal zone, but I believe would once in effect, they would allow down to a four-foot setback from side and rear property lines. So a you know, modestly sized ADU may be able to fit in the rear yard additionally. The zoning district would allow for potentially a second story. And so an ADU could be built above that, above the, you know, the proposed development as well. So I think there could be a couple of options for them.
Okay, I just wanted to understand what I'm getting ourselves into. So thank you. I don't have questions.
I have a question on the landscape plan. We've covered what's going to be removed, but the actual plan shows the planting plan doesn't show any trees, although on that sheet, there is a whole section on with a tree schedule and talks about pines. And so I just, I'm looking for reassurance that they will not be planting any pines. Do we know this?
I'm sorry, let me, I'm trying to move to the landscape plan here.
Maybe it was the landscape plan lower right, maybe it was just some boilerplate from the landscape company because it just talked about pine. Several versions pine.
Got it.
And yet I didn't see it in the actual planting plan.
Yeah, I may if I may defer to the applicant, I know our, we do have a condition for replanting. And we don't specify a certain species or prohibit any certain species. So I may defer to the applicant to if they can elaborate on what they're intended, if they have any idea of what their intended proposal for replanting in terms of species, maybe.
The applicant here, I don't see the name for it in the list of attendees.
May I suggest that as an alternative solution, if the applicant's not available to address these questions, is that we would amend or supplement our conditions of approval to make it clear that before or in conjunction with the supplemental of the building permit that the applicant needs to submit an updated landscaping plan that includes species that are drought resistant and appropriate to the local climate, something along those lines, noninvasive drought resistance and appropriate to the local climate.
Well, I, okay, I don't know if we need to go that far unofficial. I, because like I said, I don't really see room for a pine tree. But if the applicant were here, I would just wouldn't have informally pointed out that the issue with the extra flammability of the pines and also that the wood chips that they have proposed as a ground cover that I would not recommend those within five feet of the house. In other words, along the sides, this is not recommended. They are flammable. And I don't, I don't think this needs to be in the condition of approval, but I, but perhaps they don't know this. And so.
We can include that advice in the letter of decision.
Yeah, that'd be good. It just, yeah, okay. So in this case, want to have public comment on this item?
Now, opening public comment for item number two. If your hand is raised, your name will be called. Give it a few seconds because I don't see anybody with their hands raised at the moment. Again, if you're calling by phone, please press star line to raise or unraise your hand.
Okay, seeing that no members of the public wish to speak, if there are no objections, public comment on this item is now closed. Commissioner comments and deliberations. So we'll start with Commissioner Ramirez.
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity. Yeah, you know, normally I think we all want to see projects that meet all the requirements. And when we are presented with, you know, undersized slots and stuff like that. It's kind of challenging to see, you know, how much of a a house can be put into that thing. But, you know, we've done it before, so this is not the first time that we have allowed something like this. I would say not everybody needs a five thousand square foot house. So for that reason, I'm going to say that I am in favor of the project.
Commissioner Gupta. I echo the thoughts that Commissioner Ramirez mentioned. For the size of the lot, I think I am very pleased to see how the applicant has tried to keep it to a single-story home rather than building something vertically up to make it bigger. Yeah, it would have been nice if all the setbacks could have been more conforming, but but looks like a good design to me. So I I'm in favor. Thank you.
Commissioner Hanson.
I don't think we have enough of these tiny homes in the Bay Area. You know, you need to start somewhere in a home and seeing them. I expect more of them to be in the Bayside than on the coast side. But the coast side needs them too. I think the location for this is appropriate. I like I like it because it is tiny more than anything else. And I has, it has my support.
I also support the project. And so may I have a motion?
May I?
Yes.
All right, I'm going to move that the plant commission approved the coastal development permit, design review and nonconforming use permit as per file number PLN two thousand twenty dash dash zero zero one six seven by adopting the required findings and conditions of approval listed in attachment A.
I will second that.
We have motion in the second. Roll call, please. I.
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 I. Motion is approved four to zero. Now we'll go on to the director's portion of the meeting.
Thank you, Chair Ketchum. Good morning, commissioners. I don't have any correspondence to report to you.
Thank you, Chair Ketchum, good morning, commissioners, um, I don't have any correspondence to report to you today, uh, nor am I recommending a study session for next meeting, we have two regular items on the agenda, uh, one being the resource management grading permit, architectural review and negative declaration for a large new single family residence and horse stable in the South Skyline area of the county, um, as well as a coastal development permit for the Vida, Vida Verde Nature Education Camp. It's a coastal development permit and uh, planned agricultural district permit. And I think some of you may be familiar with the good programs offered by Vida Verde. They've been working on this application for a long time, and I uh, am excited to bring this proposal forward to you. Um, a potential third item, which I hope will also be included in the next agenda, will be the findings for denial for this MA subdivision uh, from the last meeting that you had. Um, so, moving on to the director's report, um, I don't have a lot for you today um, that I haven't previously reported on, uh, the one thing I do have is um, to remind you or alert you to the fact that the county is working with the Office of Sustainability and the cities within the county to update what's called our local hazard mitigation plan. Um, this is a plan that helps identify vulnerable areas of the county to natural and man-made hazards, and also sets forth a mitigation plan for minimizing uh, these hazards. So, the current effort is an update to the uh, multi-jurisdictional local hazard mitigation plan that was adopted in twenty sixteen. And the second public workshop that is uh, going to be held to address the draft plan that's available for uh, review will occur tomorrow, uh, August twelfth, between four and five thirty uh, via Zoom, so if that's something that you're interested in getting um, some background and more information on that's available to you. Um, I anticipate that um, as part of the adoption process, there are likely to be changes or um, new policies and regulations that will need to be adopted by, by the various participating jurisdictions, including the county. So ultimately, any change in policy or regulation that comes about from these efforts will come before you and the board of supervisors. So, it's really a very important document, particularly in today's day and age, it's a component of our general plan. And um, it will be followed by an update to the safety element of the general plan. The safety element of the general plan and the local ha- hazard mis- uh, mitigation plan must be consistent with one another and well-integrated, and I'm glad to have the partners that we do have helping us to develop this very important plan. So, um, there's a website, you can find it if you just go to the county website and search for local hazard mitigation plan. Um, it's being, as I said, head up by the Office of Sustainability. And um, if you have any questions about it or have trouble finding information, feel free to send me an email, and I'm happy to point you in the right direction. So that concludes my report for today, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions, Christine?
Uh.
None.
I have a couple of questions. Um, I looked at the org chart, uh, Steve, and there are some vacancies on there. Are those vacancies going to be filled?
Yes, uh, you know, this has been a constant challenge for the department. Um, we've been battling with a pretty high vacancy rate for over a year now. Uh, we've made some good progress in filling those positions, but oftentimes um, those positions are filled with internal candidates, which creates a domino effect, because then we need to start another recruitment to replace that internal candidate. So um, we, we made very good progress, uh, we have um, at least two new planners on board, um, a new permit technician who started, uh, we're getting some assistance from contractors on a temporary basis until we can fill these vacancies, so um, it has been a challenge, but we're making progress in addressing that.
Okay, thank you. Um, uh, there's a California Coastal Commission meeting coming up, I think sometime next week. Uh, I think it's next week, but I'm not entirely sure. Uh, is there anything of interest or anything that would be coming to the planning commission that is being brought up this time?
Well, there's always something of interest on the coastal commission.
Interest? Do you think that would be coming to us?
You know, I saw that uh, agenda released yesterday, I haven't had a chance to go through it. Um, I'm not aware of any county-specific items on there. Um, I will say that I have been contacted by um, one of the contractors that's working with the commission and the commission staff on their sea level rise um, guidance document, and so um, I uh, owe her a call back, that's uh, on my to-do list for this week, and so I, I think it's great that they've reached out to the county to provide input as they look to update and refresh their statewide plan. Um, and so, I, I'll go through the agenda, if I see anything significant, I'd be happy to let you know. Otherwise, feel free, if you see something on the agenda, uh, send me a question. You know, I, I do like to look at the agendas and look at what's happening throughout the state, because oftentimes other jurisdictions are grappling with similar issues and items, so um, I can guarantee you, Commissioner Gupta, there'll be some nugget of information within that agenda that is
I know.
applicable to our county, so um, I'm glad you're look, taking a look at those. And um, if you see anything of interest that you'd like to discuss, I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you, uh, uh, problem is, it's a three-day agenda uh, on there, and it's long, so
Oh, yeah.
Go through the whole thing, um, just, just even looking at the agenda, there's a lot of information out there. So I may miss something uh, that's pertaining to our county, so, okay.
Okay.
So if you see anything, I would appreciate it, yeah.
Absolutely, absolutely, they do have a very long agenda, in addition to being three days, they often go from nine o'clock till, you know, after dinnertime, so so meetings indeed.
Right, okay, and my last question is, there's one comment that in South San Francisco, they are offering some, uh, through a nonprofit, some incentives uh, of providing them with feasibility and project management support for EDUs. Is, is there something like that, that county is looking into that you are aware of?
Yes, um, so I believe the program you're referring to is uh, HART's ADU program. HART is an acronym for Housing Indemnment Authority and something else. Um, but uh, the county works very closely with HART and provides funding to HART to implement housing programs, assistance programs countywide. And um, yes, I think their most recent update to their ADU assistance program is uh, very valuable and interesting. Um, among other things, as I think you mentioned, it includes um, plans um, that can be used for free by a homeowner to submit to a local jurisdiction for purposes of getting a permit to build an ADU. So that's a big cost and often time-consuming step in the process to develop plans. So having these um, plans available for use for free, I think is a great step forward. And that, we certainly uh, welcome applications of those types here in the county, and we're doing what we can to expedite uh, the review and approval process for ADUs.
Okay, thank you, Steve, thank you for addressing those.
My pleasure.
No more questions.
I have a, a request for advice on, um, this is on, so there's a pilot off-leash a dog project uh, that's coming along, and the NAGDEC comment period is currently, well, it finishes up on Friday. And my, my question is, is it appropriate for me to comment on the NAGDEC, which will be going directly to the Board of Supervisors for adoption? The issue here is that eventually a CDP will be required uh, if they go forward with this, and the CDP will be coming to the planning commission. So does that mean that I should not comment on the NAGDEC, or does it, what's your advice?
Well, I'll let Tim uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but um, I, I think it would be perfectly appropriate for you or any commissioner to comment as an individual on the environmental document that's going before the board. Um, as it relates to your capacity as a planning commissioner, um, the, whatever environmental document is adopted by the Board of Supervisors will be a useful point of information for you to refer to as you evaluate the proposal's consistency with the local coastal program. And as you know, many SEQA issues overlap with LCP issues. I think in most cases, the LCP standards are the higher, more stringent standards. So the SEQA analysis kind of provides a baseline, but then oftentimes you need to add to or supplement the mitigation measures that are sufficient under SEQA to get to a project that complies with the local coastal program. So uh, that being said, if uh, any commissioner were to believe that there are environmental issues that are relevant to the project that you think should be addressed, either because it's required under SEQA or because it's an issue that you'll be um, need to uh, delve into as part of your coastal development permit review, it would be appropriate to share those um, issues or concerns with the board supervisors. Uh, would you agree, counselor?
Steve said to correct him if he was wrong, I am pleased to report I have no corrections to offer. As, as a citizen of the county, you have a right to communicate anything of interest on um, a NAGDEC during the comment period. Um, so you should do so as a citizen, if you feel uh, that it's necessary to improve the environmental review of the project.
Yeah, okay, if you're wondering, I've always commented on environmental things, because it's the environmental question is about seeking information to make a decision, it's not making a decision. You know, what are the consequences if we do this, and can we live or not live with those? So to me, I don't think you should feel reserved of making any environmental question on those type of documents.
Okay, thank you, that's very helpful, uh, do any other commissioners have updates or questions today?
Nope.
Then, seeing no further business, the meeting is now adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.
Yeah.
Bye bye. Okay, see you next time.